Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can't make four point oh adjustments. Are there any adjustments to be made?
Yes. I propose two adjustments to the agenda. The first adjustment, I would ask that the Project Grace donation and Steffi be moved up to the next item on the agenda.
So that would be-
Or after public comment, but prior to the workshop. And secondly, I, we do not need an executive session to go over the administrative contract.
And just any-
Yes, and then there's-
Three other adjustments. Just removal of twelve point seven, twelve point eight, and twelve point nine, which were all listed as policy removals that has been adjusted off the agenda.
So moving on to five point oh, the Project Grace donation. We have Stephanie Cox here, who is the executive director for Project Grace. And Project Grace so graciously donates money to our school nutrition program for the backpack program and also for fresh fruit for, for the kids. And, and she just wanted to speak a little bit amount about that donation. And we are, we are so grateful. Oh, and I'm sorry, and the amount for the Scarborough School Nutrition Program is three thousand dollars donation.
We are delighted to present this check to you. Project Grace is neighbors helping neighbors. And thanks to the generosity of a foundation grant fundraisers from the Higgins Beach Association and Hillcrest neighborhood and folks in Mill, at Old Mill Creek neighborhood and all around town, we're able to provide this support to the nutrition program. It allows kids who want to set, need a second helping to have one, or families who can't quite meet the bill for the school lunches throughout the year because of hardships like illness or loss of wages. They don't have to worry that their kids don't get lunches or snacks or milk. And also, we provide additional support, like fruit for the backpack program that goes home with kids over the long holidays. When kids don't go to school, as you well know, they generally don't eat as well or as nutritiously as we would like if their families are struggling. And it's our privilege to work so closely with the school department and the staff and the school board as well. And we thank you for that. I'd especially like to recognize Brenda Franklin and Peter Esposito. They have been working with us to add more fresh food to the, to the backpacks going home. And they've been working with their colleagues to have a keen eye, to look for kids who are hungry and make sure that they get the nutrition they need so they can learn. So they don't have to have a grumbly stomach in math class or have a headache before the end of the day because they didn't eat well. So we're grateful for this partnership. In addition to this year's check, we're pledging to continue this program next year, thanks to a grant we recently won. So we will work with Brenda and Peter on the exact figure, but it will be at least twenty-five hundred as, as before. So with our thanks for your partnership and support.
Well, we thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of acceptance of the donation from Project Grace for the food service program.
Second.
All those in favor?
And with thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you too for your volunteer service for the town and the kids.
It's great to hear, and it's great to hear what our wonderful food service staff does to help our kids.
Oh, they care a lot. They sure do.
Yeah. It's really, it's more than just, just food, that's for sure. Thank you.
And thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steffi.
So, Agenda six point oh, public comment on agenda items. I'd like to welcome anyone who'd like to make a comment. Seeing none, I guess we will move on. Agenda item six point oh, or-
Well, it's seven now.
I'm sorry, seven, sorry. Seven point oh, our workshop, part two of our Board of Education Self-Evaluation, Goal Setting, and Evaluations.
I hope Mike can move it up here.
So is it, okay, good. So we're starting out with our, our workshop today. We started the self-evaluation process, well, we started way back in May or June. We were kind of looking for a, a model to use. And now we're kind of in the second, second step of this process. And then we always start out, as we, as we always do, with, with our mission of, of why, as always, we start with our mission, which provides focus for our work. Fundamentally, the purpose of Scarborough Public Schools is to provide a safe and inclusive learning environment where each and every student is empowered to be a resilient lifelong learner who's prepared to engage as a community and a growth society. We also, we also like to talk about, about our vision. And this is something, our focus is our students. And that is why, why we do this work, so we can better serve the students in our district. I hope that the goals we make and we develop will help this board see improvement in the way we function as a board. And we're constantly working towards improvement, just like our students and teachers and staff and administration. Moving on to, for this work, we have some long-term objectives. You know, the purpose of this work is to evaluate the whole board while providing a forum for honest evaluation. We really want to understand our board as a whole and see where we need to improve to better serve the students. This part of our work is done each year, as is delineated in our operating protocols. Our operating protocols kind of guide our work. And at this time, we feel it's especially crucial to look within, within and see where the board can improve, you know, with the recall and, and the fact that we will have many new members joining the board all at once in November. So we feel like this work has even added meaning. And also feel that, you know, structure is important to maintain when weathering great changes. So, so I feel that this, this work will, will help us with The process, I just want to kind of delineate how our process will be, will be working. You know, we started in, in the spring identifying this self-evaluation tool. This was a, this is a pilot program that we got the tool from Kenny Bunk, Kenny, well, it's RSU 21, which includes Kenny Bunk and, I forget what else, Rundle, yeah. So they've been using this tool for a while. And I believe it came from New York originally. I think it might have been a New York. It was also used in other states. So we wanted to pilot this program and, and really this year, see how it, how it works for Scarborough, to see if it works for our board to, to have this process go on. We also like this tool because within the system, there is time for a mid-year view, which I believe would really serve the board after November, you know, knowing that it will be a, a very changed board at that time. And it's important for that board, as we talk about in November and December, the board will do orientation, professional development. But then in January, they'll do, as a part of this evaluation tool, they will do a mid-year review process, which I think will serve them well in that they can adjust the goals or set new goals as, as they find necessary. So this isn't a static process. This, this process is something that goals will be set, and then goals will be looked at, it's goals are met, and then it's just moving on. It's, it's not something that's done once and, oh, you don't have that in the year. So, so I think that, that part of this, this tool will be really helpful to us moving forward. And so it's hoped that setting this up will help our mini-board as well as, as future boards to have that structure. As, as we know, the structure really helps for us to understand our goals. Were there any, anyone have any discussion on the, kind of the guide to the calendar here? I just want to make sure that if there was anything that anybody wanted to add on the, on the calendar, except for, so moving on-
She doesn't have a microphone.
Added one behind you, Jack.
Oh, who doesn't have one?
You don't.
Oh, I don't. Are, are people hearing or is it, is it a-
Well, they probably can't.
Mine's not on. I'm just laughing.
What I'm saying is that if this is being recorded-
Oh, well, I see what you mean. Okay.
Well, that's-
Jack, I'm afraid I can make a lot noise.
Okay. Okay.
So I have a question. We're piloting this, so does that mean that the next mid-year, the full board would vote to use this or not use it?
Well, I think you'd want to, I would think, I mean, that would be up to the, the board ultimately. But I would think the board would want to, you know, go through the full year to really see how.
But I guess my question was, does it have to be approved at some point to, that this is the format that we want to use?
Um, I guess in, I guess moving forward, you know, like if you wanted to say, okay, like next, May or June, you wanted to say-
That was my question.
Yeah, yeah. So the workshop objectives. So we are going to, you know, analyze the self-evaluation results, which we, all of the board members filled out the evaluation form and turned them into me. And then, and then I looked at them and analyzed them. And then we'll also, tonight, we have these lovely posters up. And so we are going to, in addition to filling out the self-evaluation form, we also wrote our own goals of what we thought would be good goals for this board to pursue. But we kind of wanted, we wanted to have the goals that we also, that we created, but then we also want to look at the data to see what, how that guides us. So these are the standards that are, these standards around here are the standards from our self-evaluation tool. And so we will take the goals that we wrote and put them and see where they fit to see if the goals that we wrote are similar to the results from the self-evaluation. Like if there's a certain standard that we might say, that's a standard we might need to work on, that that's a standard we weren't as proficient in as a, as another standard. So, and, and then after we do that, then we'll look at both the self-evaluation results and the sorted goals to start forming our, because the goal here is to make smart goals that are, that you can define evidence-based and have guidelines. And so that would be, that would be the objectives for tonight. I don't think we, we won't come up with tonight with our goals completely-
Workshop. But in doing that, we don't have any data to rely on. We really don't want to have data to inform our board. So we did feel it's important to have this data, but then at the same time, there are limitations because we don't have five respondents.
How was the third respondent?
Julie, because she's known.
Oh, I thought maybe they're talking.
Oh, no, sorry. But-
That's a good idea to have included Dylan.
No, I put it in the, I have, I have-
It's okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so we will, yeah. Well, we, but I, we'd love to have it still. That would still be a good thing. We can add it right in. So, so we want, in doing this, this self-evaluation, it's not so much looking at how each board member performs, it's, it's the whole board, it's, it's the group. So we will, that, that is how we look at this, look at this data. But we also want to have anonymity in it so that, you know, it is about the whole board versus about one, one particular person. So that, so that can be difficult with such a small sample size. The other issue is, you know, due to recall, we have four members with less time on the board instead of a combination of different years served, which that provides different perspectives if you've been on the board a year or two years or four years or, or as Jackie is almost four years.
How many years, how many years, Jack?
At the present time, nine.
But, but over the course-
You don't want to know.
Yeah. I think it's close to forty though, right?
No, 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 no.
Off and on, no.
I mean, maybe, but, but I haven't served all of that.
No, no.
Not one second.
Off and on, often.
Off and on.
Yeah. So, you know, this was our first time doing, the other limitation, you know, this is our first time doing this evaluation. So there's always issues when it's the first time going through it. And I know some members might have liked to have a little more time, you know, to look at the data. So, let's see.
And I want to tell you, coming in this evening with two of the Rosveras brothers, they said that they heard I was running for the council. That is absolutely not true. I am not running for anything.
Thank you. So for our analysis, you know, although our sample size was small, I tried to look, I still tried to look at the data in a variety of ways. I averaged the scores. So, you know, if someone put a one here and a two here and a three here, you know, I averaged all the scores. I then also looked at how each board member scored each substandard and took a tally of each ratings. If there were three twos and three threes or, you know, two threes, I looked at that. And then I also just looked at the goals each board member had submitted and the comments from the evaluation to, to really understand the data. Were there any, anything anyone want to say to me on that?
I think it would just be important to remind folks who are listening and watching that the rating scale was a one to four. In the language here, we had talked about possibly changing it to align to the teacher evaluation system, but wanting to test out the tool where we did that. So one being does not need, two basic, three proficient, and four exemplary. So that's what Mary's talking about with the one to four.
Yes, we did talk about possibly doing that, but whether, I think that's something that we might want to discuss with the board, whether the Marzano innovating, you know, if that works with a self-evaluation tool.
And how is this process different than the Marzano that we've abused in the past? I mean, it looks very similar.
So the difference would be that Marzano is aligned to the teacher's standards, teaching professional standards. This is aligned to school board professional standards. That also talks about innovating, where this is more about the definitions between what innovating means, which is the highest rating for the teacher's tool, is very different than what it would mean to be exemplary as a board. You don't necessarily get to innovate a lot as a school board member. There are opportunities for it, but not necessarily. And some would just like the process.
Thank you.
And this, and I would think that this, this tool's also just too much.
What a board does.
I just wanted that out there because we have used a version of Marzano in the past.
And was it a version of Marzano that was more specific?
Very similar to this.
Oh, so it was more specific to school board, then?
Somebody adapted it.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, but it looked almost the same to me.
Jack, when we discuss it, I wouldn't mind hearing some of, you know, some of your feedback about how, you know, if there were things in that that you felt like were helpful that, you know, or vice, vice versa, that could give you-
Listen, going forward, you folks are going to have to run this, not I. So I'm just along for the ride and make suggestions if they're helpful.
So moving on, I, I did, this is the summary of the self-evaluation results. And so this, in this, because I did look at, as I said, I looked at the data in different ways, but chose this way in particular to kind of focus on tonight is more how the majority of the boards scored each, each number. So instead of an average, so if an average, if with an average, you might say if you had one four, one three, one two, two, you know, so it, it comes out differently versus looking at, okay, most of the, oh, yes, yeah. So most of the people filling out the evaluation, you know, went towards a two or two or a three. So that, so that's a, that was the way I decided to look at the results tonight just because that seemed to give a little more information, whereas the average sometimes would inflate it more just because taking those, those higher numbers would, would pull it forward. So I kind of wanted to know where were most of the board members kind of feeling things were. So, so that's why we chose, chose that one instead. So, so like in, in standard one, there were more twos scored than any other score. So the sumative score was two. And it's not that there might have been in that, and then each standard has five or six, six, each standard has, I guess, six, has six substandards. So each board member would score those substandards. So, you know, we took all of those substandards, then there were more twos than there were three, go lines or fours. So, so in looking at this data, you know, again, from a very small pool, you know, there are areas of strength and areas in which improvements needed. Standards four and five were both rated proficient. And when looking at the majority of the marks, there was uniformity in the replies for the board for most of those substandards. I mean, there were some that were different, but for the most part, there was, there was a good amount of uniformity. While in standards one, two, and three, there was, there was more variance. Some members felt strengths, where others felt that there were areas which required improvement. And looking at the data, some of the variance, you know, could be due to the amount of, of time on the board. It's, it's possible that those have been on the board longer, experienced different aspects than those on the board for a shorter time. Or those who are on the newer on the, on the board likely have an easier time thinking only their current experience, you know, just this year on the board, whereas folks that have been there longer might be thinking about different times. So I, so the, the upshot of that is all viewpoints are valid, you learn with close look, and, and they all bring, bring wealth of knowledge to, to this experience because, so, so I just wanted to look, you know, looking at this, these self-evaluation results, we'd like to follow with our data-wise evaluation process. And, and I just wondered, you know, from the board, like what do you notice? What do you wonder? Is there any, what do you think of the results? Did anything seem surprising? Did it turn out as you expected? I guess, just wanted to see if there was any, anything anyone wanted to discuss on that.
Yes. One of the things that I think was evident was the absence of Monique Cobbleton because of illness. And over the years, she has made two, three, sometimes four presentations to the board on curriculum matters and on the evaluation of students and things of that nature. We have not had that privilege this year of her expertise. I missed it. I think the staff has missed it and perhaps even the parents have missed it. But, so as far as receiving in-depth data from our curriculum director, that has been absent. I think also the fact that we've had to spend our time fielding questions and answering emails in turmoil has deflected from our job of, of school board business, quite frankly. So I think that- So, I think that, that the newer members have not had a true experience of what it is to be a member of a school board. And I'm sorry for that, I truly, truly am sorry for that, because there is so much more that we should have accomplished in this year. And we should have accomplished it sooner in a better, better timeline as we've had in the past. So I lament that a bit, and, uh, that's the past, now we have to move forward. What I think that needs, we need to concentrate on is what do our students need and how are we going to provide that? And how are we going to replace the knowledge and the leadership from Monique when she is still on medical leave? Can we afford to hire an interim? I don't know that, I'm not the big budget person, but that has been a serious gap since December. And, uh, I don't think we can go through another school year that way.
The good news is I don't think that we're going to have to.
Good.
She's working her way back and...
Well, and, and that's very, very good. I think the fact that we're trying to please everybody has been a problem. And I think that before we try and, as individuals, try and say this or that or the other thing, that we should be having a discussion around the questions that we have received and how we're going to deal with them as a school board. And I know that, that Donna, before you, Mary, and you, and Hillary is Chair of Communications, which has not actually been appointed as a board committee, something else we have to do or should be done. I think that, that the board needs to discuss the problems that are brought before us and, and decide how they might be solved if we do in fact think they're a problem.
And how does, how do, exactly like as far as the data, like, how do you feel like the data shows anything about what you were, feel like that?
I think that this board, that the Board of Education in the past has done more than a basic job of delivering services to the children of this community. And when you look at the evaluation here, our self-evaluation, we're not doing a very good job. I don't think basic is good enough. We don't demand basic of our students, of our staff, of our superintendent, we want excellence. And I would hope that the board can get back to what I consider board excellence. That's my analysis, thank you.
Thank you.
About five more minutes.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Did you have any comments?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just asking, um, Leanne and Hillary regarding their comments and what they were thinking about, about the results. Anything jumped out at you that, that you felt like that was something that you feel strongly about?
Well, there were a couple of things I thought, I, I mean, I agree with Jackie, I don't think that we did have a very good window into what the schools were, or what the kids were doing since I've been on the board, um, and that's something, like, since I used to be a teacher, that I really missed and I thought that we would have a lot more of. So, I mean, I agree with you there. I do think that, you know, we might not have had a typical experience, but it's still an experience and I feel like we should be learning from it. Like, all of these standards for communication and community relations, like, those are all standards that I did not feel like we did a good job on. My goals were almost all communications-based, or not even, you know, like, just relation-based. Because, you know, I don't think having a town and a school board and all this distrust between everyone in town is healthy for the students. So, if we're looking at what is best for the students in the long run, that's a big piece of it. So that's where most of my goals were.
And that does seem to bear out, is like, that was an area that definitely a lot of other people also felt that there was some... Leanne, Mary's?
I'm not talking much because when I talk, I'm starting to cough, so. Sorry. I, I would, please do. Um, so I apologize in advance if I start coughing loud. I think I'm surprised by the discrepancy in views, that it's very much, there's a lot of positive and then there wasn't a lot of middle ground, it was not, we're not in alignment amongst ourselves.
Yes, and I, and I, I did see that on some, on some measures, we were more in alignment, like, like I said, if the standard scored five, there was, there was definitely more alignment off, you know, for the majority of the substandards. But, but I'd say for one, two, and three, definitely there was, there was definitely variables in. And some of it, some of it was just not having been on the board the time when you would see certain things happening, but I think, you know, that, you know, there's some things that happen, you know, in fall, or, you know what I mean, or, you know, so, so some of that has to do with that, but then some of it has to do with what Jackie said, the, the year we've had, that, that there were meetings in the spring when really there wasn't board business, you know, there wasn't board business being done, it was more handling the turmoil and, and handling what we needed to handle at the time.
But that is, that is important.
Oh, no, but that is part of our, that is part of our work, but, but then when you, and it's important work, and you want to be able to handle those, those issues and respond to the, to the public. But when you are doing that, you aren't doing some of the other things that are part of being in the board either, you know, so I'm not saying it's not important work, it absolutely is, it absolutely is.
The one thing I'm wondering about is if the variance, I mean, it's hard to say is the variance because of the, of the time on board and lots of experience? Is the variance because it's a new tool and we haven't had a chance to calibrate it yet and really pack it and ensure that the way we're interpreting each performance in a year is the same? There could be a lot of reasons why there's variance, and so I would just remind us to try to stay, like, low on the ladder of inference and keep thinking about just like, what does the data say? Um, and kind of hone in our discussions based on what it actually says before we get too far to assuming or trying to figure out why the data says what it says.
Well, I also think that digging into data for this is, I don't think it's, I don't think it has, you know, I'm not gonna say that data has no place here because it does have a little bit, but digging super deeply into data from four people or even from seven people, like, we should just, in my opinion, it would be more useful to everyone put their goals out and then, you know, and then go through them and see where it matches up and what, you know, what...
But that's the plan for the next one.
Right. I just think that's the more valuable.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if, if there's any other comments, we can, I think we're probably running low on time.
One minute.
Yeah, so, but are there any kind of finishing up comments on that? Or do we wanna move on to the next part of the activity?
I think we move on.
Yep, so moving on, um, so this is our activity for the board shop. I took all of the goals that everyone had written, everyone wrote, I think, two, three goals. I think it might have been even a couple, a couple extra in there. And so, each board member will take, will take all of these written goals and they'll place each one in one of these standards of leadership. From, or, these are, all these standards are from the self-evaluation system. So, standard one, vision, leadership, and accountability, standard two, governance and policy, standard three, communications and community relations, standard four, staff, um, staff.
It's just who, responsible, staff, recruitment, and environment.
And then the standard five is that's the leadership. So, look at each written, um, goal and just place it where you feel it would fit within that.
On the paper?
Well, start, we'll start out actually at the table, so if you wanna just, instead of, if you wanna just, you know, look at it at the table, that'd be...
Yeah, do like five minutes.
If you wanna just, like, write down, like, number one, you know, you can just write it down, like, on the...
I have, I have, I need more space.
Yeah, you can just write, you can just write down the number here and then we can, then once you're kind of all done, then you can take it up.
Inside your envelope, you have each head title and of this paper, and then you have all of the goals that were submitted. I'm gonna go grab tape on you, it's just a simple...
Did you get that?
I'll, I'll...
Pardon me? I will share it with you. Thank you.
There's something I wanna say.
There's a microphone on. Oh, so, this is the best, well, I put back to this.
Yeah, I don't know.
Might make it easier. Save me some time.
Did you say save some time?
Oh, that.
It'll never happen here.
Do the same thing. The same thing with our side, just waiting for it. So we're matching.
Right.
Yeah. Probably do it twice.
So, I'm, I'm just sort of...
Good.
She really good, but next year, she wants to start a weekend campaign for the school students, so she's gonna have, oh, she's gonna, uh, put some sort of big banner or something right in the lobby of the store. Have, good, almost about, well, contests, competitions over the years, to encourage groups to get back to the community and have a good feel, so like, like, Chachka's here and I have a lot to add to this, or like, or doing a, um, voter registration drive, or just trying to help get back to the community or...
So, do you have any students who have expressed their...
Really? But like, I haven't really spoken to them, I don't know, so.
Keep in mind that these were done individually, each of us.
My, my work. Just thinking.
Too much.
That's just the first.
Can pick your caseet. Whatever type you like. You ready for the comment? Whenever you're ready, you can start.
You know, worth the word, education, period.
I haven't seen it either.
So in about five minutes, you'll wanna start sticking them up?
Why don't I have more of this here than I had on there?
Did you get the updated?
Maybe.
No, wait.
See, I still... See what?
I can say this that hard.
Would have been fair to ask it when you did, because you know, you're... Oh, you might not have been on the board yet.
Okay, I was.
We need to, we have to be, um, full day, budgeted, but I don't think we're...
No, I don't think I...
Leadership and accountability.
You do some too.
Dylan, don't make me laugh, this is serious business.
Governments, yeah, policies.
You know what?
Create a system, we're gonna go.
You know what, you know what's missing?
What?
You see anything about educating our children?
Tropical.
Are you teaching classes?
The government to make that possible.
Please put away this stuff.
That's close. I said, it's kind of bad, it's really empty.
Guess I wouldn't say stack.
This one's interesting because we invite them and they never come.
I had to put that anywhere yet. I was like, what is it, like?
Are you, are you, are you gonna be ready to tape up soon?
Oh, shit. Now, these ones should fall into places. Pardon me?
Board governance and policy. Mine doesn't have standards posted on it.
You should have...
They're in your packet.
I know, it's gonna be a little...
Wait a minute, this was, what was in my packet?
I got almost done with my tape, someone can have this one. Just need to rip off a couple of pieces.
Jackie, do you have a boarder by standard? You wanna give me one and I'll stick yours?
No, I don't.
Um, do you think you want some?
Sorry.
Are you adding them here? Are you adding them? I'm not moving them. I'm not moving them off the thing.
If you're done, you can kind of just look at seeing where the, where the goals are.
Thank you.
While we're kind of finishing up, you can kind of look. It's interesting.
Well, maybe I have different ideas where they go.
Oh, no, no, I know that many of them are direct show. I have no idea.
No, I want them all basically, you know, all sorts. Or people, or my people think that.
Nope.
Okay, two minutes and then we have to wrap up the workshop. Nobody wanted to go up?
I'm afraid it goes down. I have like a whole thing off the list.
Sticks? Not now. Put on the new for sticking down.
I do like the sticky haps.
That's different.
We probably need to wrap up, so we can always put them up a little later, Jackie, if you're, we, we. But I think we have a sense of kind of where we're headed anyway. Even if we don't have all of them up, but thank you. Okay, we kind of, thank you, but I think we probably have at least a sense, it looks like we've got enough up here to kind of know where, where our, where our goals. Did everyone kind of get a chance to look at the, look at the posters kind of before you sit down? Just kind of look at it to see where, where things are and sort of, we've got a chance to look at it and report, so we can talk about it a little bit. So I just wanted to just have a. So now that we've sorted the goals, I just thought it'd be helpful if we can look at what we have here. What do we see? Do the standards match the ones that our data showed that we should give a closer look at?
I think what we need to do is, is have Kelly type them up. And then we look at them collectively and then start to make decisions.
Yep, that's actually what we have, what Mary's talking about, next steps.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, but I, but it is, it is interesting to see though that, well, I know, I think some of them have, I know it's like we didn't quite get to finish, so there might be a few more in, in some places.
No, there are some where all five are the same, like this one.
Yeah, yeah. And then standard two has quite a bit of, you know, that people put them all there and then I think it looks like there was quite a few goals. I think in standard two and three, that seems to be more of the goals. And one.
And just to look back, this is the summary from the self about. So it looks like the goals we came up with are close to what we also feared that we would.
Did anyone have any comments on the, either what was sorted or the activity or the goals?
I just noticed that, like Hillary said, it seems that folks were connecting the goals, even if it wasn't their own goal, to the same standard, which I think can lead to some really strong strategic actions and targets for the board.
Yeah, no, it's, it's clear where those goals fit.
Well, I, I, my observation is, including myself, have not put any substantive educational goals up there.
In what way?
Well, you know, we've been talking about various forms of developing the curriculum and delivering the curriculum. There's nothing there about that as a goal. There's nothing there about setting standards. At the forefront. I'm criticizing myself as well, if you're there.
Well, the curriculum is on there. It's, um.
Yeah, there is a curriculum. There is something regarding.
I know there was.
District-wide consistency.
The point I'm trying to make is this is a board of education and we should be focusing more on how to deliver education to our students, I think, than on communication and things of that nature. And that's just a personal observation, having gone through this and as I said, I'm as much involved as anybody.
Yeah, no, I think, I, I agree with you, Jackie, but I know for me, I think in, in thinking about this, I am thinking through November, when we have forty-five board members coming on board and thinking about what does this board need to do to prepare, you know, for that so that, so that the structure of the board can maintain and we can continue to do, do our job well. So I know that is something that is probably on my mind, but it's not, it is a big change.
And I think it's hard to make specific goals. I mean, we don't, the teachers and the administrators, they're, they're delivering the education to our students. Like, that, that's, we're kind of.
We set the basis for it. We are responsible for delivering the curriculum under the law. And that's all I'm saying. I gave you my remarks, I didn't expect to debate them. They're just my observations. So you can take them and we can discuss them or you can set them aside, but I'm saying this is.
No, I don't.
This is a board of education and I think education should be in the forefront.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Jackie. I was just saying, I thought why, that, that was just my idea of why some of that came out that way.
That's fine.
But I don't disagree with you at all. So are we ready to wrap up? Is there anything else we had or, we do need to move on to our business meeting? Or moving on to, so it seems, I know from my analysis that, that working focus area was standard two. There were, there were some, sub standards in standard three as well, I think, that also stood out. And I think we'd be looking at, especially in standard two, the sub standards C, D, and E were standards that, that most people felt were an area to focus our efforts. And as I said, there was also a focus area of three B also seemed to be reflected quite a bit in the goals and comments. So the evaluation of that, that data more towards standard, standard two might be a, might be a direction. But I know there were some, there was also a bit in standard three that, that we need work towards.
Well, the one thing that I would just add before you talk about next steps is that really thinking about the layers of our organization and the roles that each of us plays in order to ensure that we're, we're reaching our mission and realizing our mission. So to Hillary's point, the, the policies that the board sets and the governance of the board creates the conditions that allows for administrators and teachers to, to do the work that they need to do. So each of us has our own lift in the organization and our, and our areas that we hone in on. And that's why I believe that when an organization is really healthy, that everybody in their own roles is working in concert and that common vision and that clear vision and that common mission are what helps us realize our goals. And so what the board's goals should be aligned to the district goals and the district goals to the building goals and the building goals to the individual classroom goals, so that we're all growing in the same direction, if you will, rather than everybody kind of working in all these different angles. And I believe that when that's happening really well and there's lots of cohesion in that process, that's when our students are going to receive the most optimal education.
Thank you.
So as the last, I said, I think we come to the last thing, 'cause I know we, we do want our next steps. We do have work to do going forward. You know, this is just kind of still kind of starting this process. So I'll be looking at, you know, kind of all this work that we've done tonight and we'll work to draft some preliminary SMART goals that, that I can share with you prior to the next meeting. Not that they are set in stone in any way, we need to discuss them more, but just have something to kind of start with for our next meeting. And so at the next meeting, you know, we decide together what goals we want to work on and tweak the goals as necessary. You know, they will be the SMART goals and we'll set the timelines with benchmarks, you know, so that, so that, you know, these goals, I think our, our plan was to have these goals be kind of our shortcut goals that, that we can try to work on just in these next few months until the November elections. But I just wanna thank everybody for all their work to fill out evaluations and to think about them and to your comments and suggestions. And I really appreciate doing this work with, with all of you and I really think this will, will only strengthen us as we, as we work moving forward, so.
Is there any interest in having a short break before you transition to the business part of the meeting?
Oh, sure.
Their motion?
There's a motion to.
No, you can, you can just, the, the chair can declare recess. It doesn't have to be a vote.
It doesn't have, okay, I declare recess.
Five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes. So we'll start at seven, ten?
And we were going to transition over there for the business part of the meeting, but rather than making you all swirl around, is everybody good if we just stay over here?
Stay right there.
We're going to stay on this side rather than.
I had a scan, what you said, but please speak up.
Oh, okay. So part of the challenge of the audio is that it's not streaming.